Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I'm glad you drive past. Well, good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Sina Nejad. I have the honor of being the Chair of the Planning and Zoning Commission. With my colleagues on the Commission, I welcome you to February twenty first, two thousand twenty-two meeting. Please make sure that you silence your phones, and if you are going to be making any public comments, I would appreciate if you limit that to three minutes. With that, please call the roll.
Chairman Nejad.
Here.
Commissioner Beattie's absent. Commissioner Jabbar.
Present.
Commissioner Javid.
Here.
Commissioner Linton.
Here.
Commissioner Makin is absent. Commissioner Noyola is absent. Commissioner Pate is absent. Commissioner Karishi.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you, folks. We do have a quorum, and you have been distributed the minutes of the previous meeting. I would entertain the motion to approve and/or if you have any comments.
Motion to move.
Motion second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the approval of the minutes? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And in opposition, the ayes have it. Thank you. Mr. Boone, we're going to get started with you. Before Mr. Boone starts, he has been nominated to be our interim city manager, and I want to tell you, Chris, how proud we are of you doing so. And I know in the meantime, you would do the best job ever, so congratulations. You should be very proud.
Thank you. Thank you.
Just don't leave us hanging out here.
I'm here. Thank you. All right. Well, I appreciate that. So, the first item on the regular agenda is PZ twenty twenty-two fifteen, and it's a request to abandon a portion of a city street right-of-way at fifty-five fifty-five College. Nathan Rivers is requesting the abandonment of a portion of the right-of-way at this location. Structures were built in the nineteen seventies without the knowledge of the right-of-way, and subsequent survey or surveys, rather, of the property did not show this right-of-way. Upon transfer of ownership this year, a plat dated nineteen thirty-one was discovered showing the right-of-way. As the right-of-way has not been developed, as a street and adjacent businesses have structures in the right-of-way currently, the new owner would like to abandon the right-of-way. Retaining the entire right-of-way as an easement would still leave encroachments, however, so the applicant has submitted a proposed utility easement to take care of the existing utility lines within this area. And let me go ahead and show, this is the area in question outlined in red there on College Street. And you, as you can see, the buildings clearly have been built within this proposed right-of-way. It does look like it was platted at some point back in the twenties or thirties to be a street, but clearly a street was never, never developed. And this is showing the, you can see the, in the hash line is the width of the right-of-way, but then you can also see the location of the existing utility lines. And so, based on this application, staff is recommending approval of the abandonment of the right-of-way with the retention of the proposed easement. And we would, we would recommend approval, again, subject to the applicant, as we are now requiring, providing an appraisal, title commitment, and then payment to the city for the property in question before the item is brought to City Council. But with that, are there any questions of staff?
Is there any two properties involved, or one just, one property involved?
So, the, the right-of-way outlined in red is the city property. So, with the abandonment, half would go to one property, half would go to the other.
Any other questions for Mr. Boone? Thank you, Mr. Boone. I see Mr. Rivers is, is in the audience. Mr. Rivers, do you have any additional comments that you'd like to give us? If you would, please state your name and address for the record.
Nathan Rivers, sixteen sixty, twenty-third Street, Beaumont, Texas.
For those of you who don't know Mr. Rivers, he is one of the most successful young men in town. I'm proud of you.
Thank you, Dr. McLeod.
Go ahead.
Appreciate that. We purchased the property at five-five-five-five College Street last year. It also comes with the property, nine fifty-five Lindbergh. On the map there, there's actually three buildings on the property. We got, run our building that's on twenty-third Street at the moment, so we're looking at moving our, our business here. We'd, we'd like to invest about a million and a half dollars in improving these properties, but to do so, we'd like to make sure that the existing building is safe from any future planned work from the city. So, our request is to abandon that road right-of-way. As you can see, it only goes to the backside of one property, and there's no areas to, for that street to go through further than that.
Yeah, it's kind of strange that they had an utility in the middle, the, the right-of-way that they issued, so I can understand that. Mr. Rivers, do you understand that the city requires you to appraise the, the property and go through that motion with them?
Yes, sir. We're ready upon approval from the Commission today to move forward with that.
And you do understand that the utility easement will remain?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, we worked with Energy and Centerpoint to come up with that easement.
Perfect.
They've agreed to that.
Perfect. Any questions for the gentleman? Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Dr. McLeod.
We've heard from the staff, and we also heard from the applicant, and the city recommends approval, so I would entertain a motion.
I have a motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve, but is there a second?
Motion second.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
With the conditions.
With the conditions.
Thank you.
Sorry.
And your second, it stays?
Yes.
Perfect. We have a motion to approve with the conditions, and a second, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And in opposition, the ayes have it. Thank you. Mr. Boone?
Okay. The second and final item on the regular agenda is file PZ twenty twenty-two thirty-one, and it's to consider a request for approval of the preliminary plat of Seven Stars Phase One, Beaumont-Jerson County, Texas. Joe Patty of Arsenale Wilson &amp; Cole has requested preliminary plat approval of Seven Stars Phase One. The project is located on the north side of the eighty-five-hundred block of State Highway one-oh-five. The six-point-five-one acre development is a twenty-one lot, single-family residential subdivision. All lots will front on Santa Drive, a fifty-foot wide right-of-way with a newly constructed twenty-seven-foot-wide pavement, street. And let me go ahead and show you, on the, on the screen, you can see Phase One is that section that is along one-oh-five, but we've gone ahead and shown you the conceptual plan for the entire subdivision. And I'll also point out, in your staff report, there was some requests for waivers to the street widths, especially of Kareem Drive. That's the drive that comes off one-oh-five. Since the staff reports have gone out, Joe Patty has sent us an amended plat. I'll go ahead and, let's see, it's a little hard to read that scale, but it's, it's been revised to address a couple of concerns. One is the width of Kareem Drive. It is now being proposed to be a sixty-foot right-of-way with thirty-seven-foot pavement wi- width, which is a minor collector drives, uh, street standard. So, in other words, as the, the entrance of the subdivision, it needs to be a little bit wider than what was originally proposed. So, Joe Patty has amended the preliminary plat to reflect that. Another issue is, I think in the original submittal, there was a common area maybe shown, but, and you'll see in our staff recommendation, we had recommended a, a note for the maintenance of common areas. I think common area's been removed, so the maintenance of that is no longer at issue. The next thing I would like to address is the question of the sidewalk. So, the applicant had requested a sidewalk waiver, and as you know, sidewalks are, are requested for new subdivisions, especially along major arterial streets. And I think the app, the developer has no issue with the sidewalk requirements within the subdivision, but there was a question about the sidewalk along one-oh-five. And if, out there on the ground, there actually is a sidewalk immediately to the west of this property, along one-oh-five, but the developers requ- had requested not to develop, install a sidewalk, rather, along this portion of one-oh-five. Now, the staff is recommending that we do require the sidewalk, subject to Text dot approval, because right now, there's, I think the developer in Text dot has a concern of continuing the sidewalk right along one-oh-five. They would prefer to either push it off of the roadway or push it on private property. And so, our recommendations still would be to provide the sidewalk, subject to Text dot approval, and that way, if Text dot in the end decides that they don't want the sidewalk there, then it would not be required. But, but hopefully something could be worked out. And the reason, again, why we're kind of concerned about not having sidewalk there is for a couple reasons. Again, as mentioned, there is sidewalk immediately to the west. On the other side of Deerfield subdivision, which is that subdivision that's existing immediately to the east, there is a school. And so, again, while most, you know, most students are, you know, either take the bus, or their, or their parents, or, you know, drive to schools, you know, having a sidewalk there, you know, would be a good option. So, again, we are recommending that they provide it, subject to Text dot approval, so that if Text dot does end up obje- objecting, it's not required. So, having said that, one other thing I would mention, kind of regard, related to sidewalks is, let me go back to the overall. If you look at the overall subdivision, there is a, a BISD property to the north. That's, I believe, the Ag Education Center up there. So, it's not currently a school, and we have no, we, we don't think, or we have no indication that it's going to be turned into a school. However, with it being BISD property, and with the amount of development in this area, there's considerable development, obviously, here, proposed. There's development on Tolliver Road, which is just south of here, several new multifamily complexes. And so, we don't, in the future, we don't know what that BISD property is going to be used at, as it could be Ag property. But, in their staff report, you saw some discussion about perhaps leaving an easement, or some kind of pedestrian walkway to connect this subdivision to the property to the north, so that if, if the occupants, the, the residents of this subdivision ever wanted to go to the sub, to the BISD property, they could simply walk there. Again, with this phase only being on the one-oh-five, we feel like we've, we've duly noted that concern and request, and that if, when, and if the next phases come in to development, you know, at that time, we may recommend it being a condition, but at this point, we're comfortable with simply pointing it out and it not being a condition. So, having said all that, staff is recommending approval of Phase One, subject to one condition, instead of the four outlined in your report, which is provide a sidewalk along State Highway one-oh-five, either on private property or in the right-of-way with permission from Text dot, and add the following note to the plat, that if lots are not developed within five years of the recordation of the final plat, the current property owner shall be, shall construct the sidewalk. And that's in accordance with the current ordinance for within the subdivision. But with that, are there any questions of staff?
Chris, are you talking about having a, a walkway between, for example, lot twenty-three, twenty-four of the future development?
Yes, sir. So, again, with it being future development, and that, that unit would come back to the Commission for final review, what, what we're discussing is, here is that, yes, when the future development comes in, that they would provide, again, just a pedestrian access, so it may be between twenty-three, twenty-four.
Somewhere.
But we can address it at that time, but that would be the idea.
But on Kareem Road or Kareem Drive, we definitely would have sidewalks?
Yes.
Okay. All right, great. Any questions for Chris?
Question, clarification.
Yes.
Please.
When you're asking about the sidewalks on Kareem, but are you also stating that we have to have a sidewalk on one-oh-five?
So, what we're asking for is a sidewalk along one-oh-five, yes, sir, to connect to the subdivision.
Okay.
They do have the sidewalks drawn on, on this plan anyway.
Yes, and again, I think the, the discussion was, we're trying to make the sidewalks work. It's just working with Text dot as to try to get them off that, you know, as far away from the street as possible.
Good. Mr. Patty, you're up. How are you? How's the family doing?
Good.
Great.
Joe Patty, I'm with Arsenale Wilson &amp; Cole, thirty-one twenty, Central Mall Drive in Port Arthur. I, I don't have any, really any other comments, other than about the sidewalk. And Friday, I got an email. We've had some ongoing correspondence with Text dot. We were originally told back in December that they weren't going to allow sidewalks in the right-of-way anymore. And I had talked with, with the staff about that, and then we had a meeting last week, and I had sent a letter to the permitting department, and she sent me an, an email stating that she had forwarded it to the area engineer, the new area engineer, Dave Collins. And Friday, I got an email from them stating that for the sidewalk, there can be a tie-in to the existing sidewalk in the Text dot right-of-way, but when the, but when, but then, the subdivision sidewalk will need to be placed on the developer's property for the utility installation. It'll, of course, be in the right-of-way. So, they're saying they don't want it on their right-of-way. And, I mean, there's been some back and forth. You know, I guess my concern is putting a public sidewalk in the rear backyards of some lots. I mean, I don't know of any place that's ever happened in city by my, I think it's, that's really just not fair. The other, the other concern I had was Deerfield, Phase Five, Phase Six, it's right next to Legacy School. They weren't required to put sidewalks in, and that's been since the sidewalk ordinance was implemented. So, that's been in the last six years, those two have gone in. And now, you know, we're getting tagged with putting in a sidewalk. If those had been putting in, I wouldn't be standing here today. I, I don't have an issue with it. I understand it. But, you know, when I get cited what the community is looking for in terms of circulation for pedestrians, and then you don't require the people next door, it just doesn't send a real clear message.
Any other comments, Mr. Patty?
That's all I've got.
Great. Mr. Boone?
Yeah, I would just echo what Mr. Patty was saying. There have been some back and forth with Text dot recently. We did get an indication at some point that they were not going to allow sidewalks within their right-of-way anymore, which we were a little taken aback by. And so, that conversation is going on currently, and so I know that they're kind of caught in the middle of this. That's why our recommendation is that provide the sidewalk, subject to Text dot approval, and that way, we can hopefully work, come to a decision once and for all on whether or not they're going to be required, and, and that way, if they don't allow them, then they don't have to provide them.
I can understand that. So, I think the, the condition would, would be changed to, sidewalk would be required upon written approval or deny rejection of the Text dot, right?
I think if we just, to say, provide, as written, provide a sidewalk along State Highway one-oh-five, and then maybe de- delete either in the private property phrase, and just say, in the right-of-way with permission from Text dot, and then continue on with the rest of that, because the rest of it's related more to interior of the subdivision. But, again, I think if we word it that way, if Text dot comes back and doesn't allow it, then they don't have to provide it.
Good. Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Boone or for the gentleman, Mr. Patty? Great. So, we've heard from the staff, and we also heard from Mr. Patty and the issue of the sidewalk. I would entertain a motion.
I have a motion to approve with the condition, subject to approval of Text dot in writing.
All right. We have a motion, subject to provide sidewalk along State Highway one-oh-five, in the right-of-way with permission from the Text dot, da-da-da, right?
Yes.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And in opposition, the ayes have it. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Patty. This concludes our regular meeting, and now the Honorable Mayor is going to get us started on the joint meeting with the City Council. Madam Mayor?
Thank you. Thank you for joining us this afternoon for the regular meeting between the Planning Commission and Beaumont City Council. Today will be your only opportunity to express any concerns, any questions concerning your application. If you have any questions, make sure that you ask any questions, because this will be your only opportunity that you will have to ask any questions before it comes to the Beaumont City Council within the next two weeks. Thank you. May I have the roll call, please?
Mayor Muta.
Present.
Mayor Protim Samuel.
Present.
Councilmember Feldschah absent. Councilmember Turner absent. Councilmember Neal absent. Councilmember Getz.
Present.
And Councilmember Durio.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We're going to get started. Mr. Boone?
Yes, sir. First item on the joint meeting is file PZ twenty twenty-one-two forty-three, which is to consider a request for the conveyance and dedication of private streets and infrastructure to the city of Beaumont. Scott Holloman and the heirs of the A.J. Fasulo estate have requested that the city of Beaumont accept maintenance of the private drive east of West Calder Road and north of Baker Road and its infrastructure. The city recently adopted a process for the conversion of private streets and other infrastructure to public ownership and maintenance. And let me pause right there, and I think for the sake of the new members and the audience, the way subdivisions typically work, and we just talked about it here when we were looking at Seven Stars, is the way subdivisions are typically developed is a developer will come in and plan a subdivision, and, of course, they bring the plat to this body, and we have certain standards in terms of the streets, the drainage, the water, the sewer, et cetera. That plat is approved preliminarily by this body, and then they work with the city engineer to, on the specifications of what's required. Once the, that, those improvements are made, then the city engineer will basically approve them if they're, if they're built to specifications, and then take those improvements, the new streets, the new water, the new sewer, to City Council for acceptance, or in the case of the county, to the county commissioner's court for acceptance, okay? Then, the developer's able to record the plat and, and begin selling lots and building houses, okay? And so, as a result, those streets are public. So, they're either maintained by the city in the city or by the county out in the county. The issue is, we do have some streets in the city that are private, and this is the case where this property was developed, and we'll talk a little bit about this soon, developed a long time ago on private, basically private drives. So, probably a good way to think about this development, even though it's single-family with different owners, is it's almost like a gated community without gates. It just happened to be developed, you know, a long, long time ago, without the benefit of the, the roads and the infrastructure ever being public. So, and cities all over the country are faced with this, right? And so, what happens is, as infrastructure ages, if it's not maintained, it gets worse and worse. And so, it's not uncommon for owners in a private drive subdivision to eventually approach the city or county and request that the city or county take over the maintenance of the infrastructure. I will say, typically what happens is, most cities ordinances, they say, you know, that they'll do an assessment of the quality, the condition of the infrastructure, and then require that it be brought up to a certain standards, okay? Or in some cases, they, the city or county, they may essentially finance those improvements, okay, through a tax or through a special assessment. And so, that's kind of where we at, where we're at with this project, and I'll, I'll go through the staff report in just a second. But I wanted to give you that overall history. And regarding the, the conveyance guidelines that we're going to talk about here, I'll go ahead and read to you the procedure, or I'll summarize the procedure. So, again, a private drive subdivision, you have to have the majority of the owners that want to apply and convey the private drives to public. So, that's obviously been submitted. We'll talk about that in a second. And then what happens is, the Public Works Director will inspect the street and infrastructure to determine the condition, which we'll talk about here in a second. And now, we're at this point currently, which is, the Planning Commission will review the proposal and make a recommendation to the City Council. City Council shall thereafter determine whether or not to accept or reject the infrastructure. So, again, I just really wanted to give the Commission and the public a little history on kind of how we got here. But with that, Lat, this, this, this application actually came back, came before the Planning Commission, as you recall, back in October of last year. And at that time, engineering, upon their review, conducted the survey and out, analysis of the streets and drainage infrastructure, and they found that the entire pavement is in very poor condition and requires a full rehabilitation. The ditches had been poorly maintained and not graded properly to drain with driveway culverts that were not set properly. The condition of water and sewer lines was unknown. Again, at the October Planning and Zoning Meeting, after some discussion, the Planning Commission requested a more thorough investigation of the drainage, water, and sewer situation and minimum improvements needed to, for acceptance of the neighborhood. So, in the following months, engineering did additional investigation, and this is essentially what they found. So, they've categorized it in terms of, really, immediate needs. And so, the assessment is that the water system requires replacement either before or immediately after acceptance of the road right-of-way. This is to improve the fire protection to the development and to eliminate the multitude of services running from an extensive bank of meters in the West Calder right-of-way. The current cost estimate is one-hundred-and-seventy-thousand dollars to install water mains, service connections, water meters, and fire hydrants. Next category is urgent work. The city would eventually need to set four manholes on the sanitary sewer system to provide access to the lines for inspections and cleaning. Estimated cost, if performed by city, city staff, would be seven-thousand dollars. Now, the remaining work. The remaining work would be addressed during normal prioritization of scheduled workload and are listed in the following with no specific order. Excavation and roadside ditches and installing driveway culverts to grade, estimated cost of this drainage improvement would be two-hundred-and-forty-five-thousand dollars. Replacing the existing four-inch sewer main with a six-inch line, the estimated cost would be forty-five-thousand dollars. And then finally, rehabilitation of the asphalt roads, the estimated cost of the road improvement would be two-hundred-and-twelve-thousand dollars. And going on, comments again from different departments in review of this application. The Fire Department, Fire Marshal Candina, reviewed the site, and the Fire Department has concerns about the width and the load limits of the current private street. City streets must have a seventy-five-thousand-pound load limit rating and be wide enough for fire apparatus. And then solid waste comments are that solid waste provides garbage service to twenty-four twenty-five West Calder Road, which is, of course, you can see there on the map. If the city provides solid waste services, improvements to the road, within the subdivision, improvements to the road will be required to maintain the weight of the garbage truck. And then furthermore, due to the narrow width with streets, having no fire hydrants along the streets and load limit concerns, it is recommended by Public Works to reject the request until upgrades to the streets have been completed. And based on, based- And based on, um, based on that assessment, staff is recommending denial of the application. But having said that, let me, um, let me go ahead and show the slides, again, you can see the, it's kind of an H, uh, pattern coming off of West Calder. And this is an old aerial photograph, I think from the nineteen thirty-eight, so you can see it's been in, it looks like different housing at the time, but, uh, it's been used, it looks like, for housing for, for quite a while. And these are some photos, again, of the existing infrastructure. Condition of the road and the open ditch drainage. And this is the entrance off of West Calder, uh, looking to the, uh, east. These are some photographs, I think provided by the applicant of, you can see the, uh, drainage issues. And so with that, I, the, um, the engineering public work staff, uh, who've looked at this project are here, if you have a specific question, I would just, uh, let them know, I appreciate their efforts in coming up with this assessment, but at this time, uh, we are recommending denial.
Any questions for Mr. Boone?
How many lots are there and how many are built and how many are vacant?
So, let's see, I don't know if we have the lot map on here. There, I, I believe there are nine houses within the subdivision, there, there is at least one home that is kinda within the subdivision, but it looks like they, they accessed their lot off of West Calder. As you can see from the aerial photograph, uh, most of the lots are fairly built out, it looks like you could add some additional housing on some of the vacant space.
Any other questions?
The, uh, on this here, uh, I noticed that it said private road, so they're trying to go from a private road to a public road?
Yes, sir.
And what about the emergent, emergency vehicles that do they go, use these roads as they are now?
So again, the concern is typically they would not be allowed to, our understanding, of course, is that, you know, emergency vehicles would go back there and do go back there if, if there's an issue. It's just, um, they certainly don't meet our standards. Yes.
So with the owners of these properties and these, where they have private streets like that, do they pay property taxes to the city of Beaumont?
Yes, sir.
Any other questions? Yes, ma'am?
Yes.
In previous, um, private neighborhoods that have converted to the city, uh, taking over the status of the streets, what have we done in the past?
So, as of now, we've had three private drive, applications for private drive subdivisions. Two of those, um, have been, I believe, formally accepted because in the assessment of the existing infrastructure, they were in a condition that was, I mean, there were some problems that were identified, but nothing critical. So the conditions of the street, the condition of the drainage, um, weren't really an issue. I think all their, their water and sewer was already, um, set up to have individual meters, if I'm not mistaken. Now there's a third subdivision, I believe it's, uh, Wood Park, and they had more significant issues and, um, we are, as a condition of approval, there were things required that we're still trying to work out with them, um, to resolve, so it has not been accepted as of now. But again, the way cities typically handle these types of conversions is a couple different ways. One is either they just don't accept them because they get asked that quite frequently or they say you've got to bring the infrastructure up to a certain standard, then we'll accept it. Or, again, a third option, which would, would be, um, you have to either finance the improvements, or come up with a mechanism whereby the city may do some of the work, but you've got to essentially finance it. And that, that can possibly be done in several ways, might be, um, special tax or something like that, but that's kinda, that could be a third option.
So their water and sewer is not tied into our city water?
My understanding is they have a single, and Molly Villarreal is our city engineer, she's here, but my understanding is there's a single meter and they all, they're private lines that-
There's a bank of meters on-
Okay.
West Calder Road-
Okay.
And then a series of service lines to the end of the job.
Okay.
They just have really long service lines.
Okay, so they have meters, it's just the private, private lines running across sometimes multiple properties? Yeah, so they're not, the lines are not within the right of way, they're crossing private property in some cases.
Cause they're private lines.
Okay, so the hundred and seventy thousand dollars that you spoke about?
Yes.
More than that, it was a seven hundred and-
It's more like seven hundred something thousand dollars.
It's a seven hundred and sixty thousand total.
Seven hundred and sixty?
For everything.
So, yeah, just to clarify, the one hundred and seventy was for the immediate need, which was the water improvement.
Water improvement.
Yes, so I think to get, let's, let me read it again, the water system requires replacement either before or immediately after acceptance of the road rights of way. This is to improve the fire protection to the development and to eliminate the multitude of services running from an extensive bank of meters in the West Calder right of way. Current estimate is a hundred and seventy thousand to install water mains, service connection and water meters and fire hydrants. So essentially converting the private system to a public, that would be the one seventy.
Are they requesting for everything to be done at one time or is this something can be done in portions?
Well, so again, they kinda categorized with immediate needs, which needs to be done before the conversion can happen, is the way I understood it. Immediate needs, urgent work, installing of the manholes, and then the balance would be more like the improvement of the drainage and the improvement of the streets, which could be done, could be done at a later date. Yes, sir.
My understanding, and I'm sure they're gonna address this themselves, if the name of the party, the immediate needs categorization, urgent work categorization, I believe is from the city's staff viewpoint. From the citizens' viewpoints, their immediate needs and urgent work involves getting improvements for their drainage and for their streets. Uh, that is, that is what they're really asking for because when it rains out there, you're suffering, they've got flooding and it makes it impassable. They, they're working with the water system being as it is, as it's been forever. Uh, so that categorization of immediate need is more from a, from a city administration standpoint than from what the citizens are actually coming before you and asking about that, but I don't wanna put words in their mouths, I'm sure they'll happily tell you something more.
Thank you.
You just wanna make sure that you don't have to dig up the street twice.
Well, the, uh, the water mains are not running under the streets, they're cutting across properties, is how I understand it.
Any other questions for Mr. Boone? Is the applicant in the audience? Good afternoon, sir, if you please state your name and address for the record and limit your discussion to three minutes, please.
My name is Scott Holloman, I live at two four nine nine West Calder Road, uh, the very end of, uh, the one on bottom there is where I live. Uh, and the drainage has been an issue for a long time, uh, and the roads, eh, which, we skipped over a little bit of the history. So this portion of Beaumont was annexed after this development was here, okay? And there was no checks and balances in place at the time to make this right. Like if you were to build a subdivision in Beaumont now, they would force you to do the roads the correct way, they'd have to be the right width, you'd have to have the drainage and the meters and everything done correctly. That was not in place in nineteen thirty-eight, right? So the problem lies now that the owners of these prop, of these roads have been deceased for over a decade, okay? So there's no way to hold them accountable, okay? So the city and the owners, at some point, should have addressed this, but it wasn't addressed. And therefore now, four years ago, I go to buy my home and know nothing about this being private, the, you know, no maintenance other than the condition of the road, you know, that it's in bad shape. Uh, and one of the real issues is, is there's, residents have been here for fifty years that have paid property taxes every single year and a portion of that property taxes goes to streets and drainage and they take that money and go fix other people's roads and drainage because that's private, you know? Uh, we never really wanted a private, it's not what we were looking for, we don't have gates up or anything like that. In fact, the private sign that you seen in the picture was only put there because of the poor condition of the roads, you don't want other people driving down there and tearing them up even worse, you know what I mean? Cause a lot of us are spending money on filler to fill potholes and, and everything else, you know? Um, and, uh, today is the first time I heard the finance, but it's never brought up as an option before, but, uh, so today was the first time I heard that, uh, I realize it's a lot of money, but we are taxpaying citizens and half our residents are retired over, over sixty-five years of age. If they were to, if their homes were to flood, they'd lose everything, you know? Uh, but yet we still pay them taxes every single year, you know, with nothing done out there. The only other thing that I can say is, I know they've done a bunch of research on it and I, I, I realize that the cost is immense, but for fifty years taxes have been paid out there without representation, we don't, we don't have anybody fixing it. And at this point, we don't know where to go from here. Uh, there are twelve properties out there, three of them to be developed. I would venture to say if this, if there was no houses out there, we probably wouldn't have a problem, you know? They'd come out, accept the roads, rebuild them, cause boy, we got new tax money coming in, but this tax money's been there for fifty years and it's just hasn't been addressed, I appreciate it, thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Any questions or comments from the commission?
The, the last meeting and, um, and somebody said, I think you said, there was some vacant lots and you were trying to find out who is the owners for those?
Oh, no, we know.
You know who's the owner for those?
Yes, sir, one's owned by Mel Nichols, which is, uh, superintendent at the DPS office. Uh, the other two are owned by the A.J. Fasulo's estate, which is the three acres.
Okay. Thank you.
So, Chris, what happens in here, city, I'm sure city hasn't got this in their budget and with everything else that's going on, let's, let's look at the options here. Let's say we, we vote to approve this, where, where is it gonna go if there's no money for it?
Well, the commission can recommend it, they can, you know, recommend to move forward or recommend denial. At the end of the day, it's just a recommendation, the city council would ultimately have to make the decision as to whether or not to deny the request or approve it as is or approve it with, as we talked about, some sort of, um, some sort of, um, you know, whether it's a special assessment or some kind of scheme, whether to finance, you know, the improvements. And then again, that's gonna take some additional work to determine, okay, exactly what, what has to be done and what can be done, you know, over time. So, a, and again, I, not a lot of guidance, it's just, this, this policy, it, it just simply says the commission should recommend, make a recommendation.
I can understand that because in, in some of the cases, the property owners just didn't wanna spend the money to bring stuff to the, to the city requirements and then all of a sudden, twenty years later, they get caught with not having maintained their property. I understand their case that, you know, at, at the time, really, there, there was no requirements for them, I guess.
Yeah, it's a good point because this one's a little bit unique because typically what you see is a private drive subdivision that is, that is planned and marketed actually as a private di, drive subdivision, in other words, an amenity to have that gate, to have that private drive and people want that and they'll, they may pay extra for it, right? The problem, of course, is if you don't, you know, start building up that maintenance and repair fund when your infrastructure starts to go downhill in twenty, thirty, forty, fifty years, now, you know, what do you do? And so that's, you know, that's kinda been the situation lately where some of these have been coming forward. This, but, but I would say this one is a little bit, it's different, so it wasn't planned like this, as far as I can tell.
Councilman?
I guess this is a question for Chris, help me understand how this is much different from when the city annexed Amelia because Amelia used to be its own community and when it was being put in, it was not built up to the same standards that the city Beaumont required. And since the city Beaumont annexed it, warrants it all, and once we did that, and we're still paying the price for doing that, we became responsible for the streets and the drainage and the sewage and everything out Amelia. This is very similar, it was twenty years before that, nineteen thirty-eight, the city annexed that, warrants it all. Why would the city not have the same obligation to do the streets and drainage and sewer construction out of this area that we did with Amelia?
So I don't know the complete history on Amelia, I assume that it was the community's public right of way, whether it was that community or whether it was the county, I don't know the history, but usually if, what typically happens for an annexation is it's county maintained. And so when a city annexes, that's really, uh, of course, a discretionary business decision really by the city as to say, you know, does it make sense for the city, you know, to annex any area? And so to some extent, it's a business decision and so, you know, that, that's part of the calculus is to say, you know, but again, once you annex, well, once you annex, then you're kind of, uh, we, we, the city are on the hook for at least some kind of minimum standard. And I will say that since Amelia, since Amelia was annexed, I think this, the annexation law has changed now where when cities do annex, they need to kinda spell out what their plan is to, uh, if infrastructure improvements are needed, what is that plan and what is that timeline? But that's been since Amelia was, was annexed.
And, and so I guess what I'm trying to, as I understand Amelia was its own community, you know, out there, uh, which was annexed, brought into the city of Beaumont, city took up everything. This, although smaller, was its own community annexed and brought into the city of Beaumont. So I'm just trying to, in my mind, discern that difference and I don't really see one.
Well, my, my thought is, and again, I, I'm not that familiar with it, with the annexation of Amelia, but my thought is it was public, maybe county maintained or the community maintained, it was public was, is my guess. In the same way, you know, if, if there's a private drive subdivision in the county currently that we annex, it doesn't automatically convert from private to public. Now if it's county maintained, it, it will convert from county to city.
Any other questions?
We have speakers, ma'am?
No, sir, we do not have a public comment, I'm sorry. Anybody from the city council or the commission?
One question, uh-
Yes.
Going back to, uh, what I was asking about earlier, is there, did they have a, what is the urgent need? I think, uh, Councilman Getz kinda made that, that assessment, that if they can't get the whole package, is there any part of the package that's most needed that can be brought back or to work on or towards? Cause they have a lot of issues, can, if you're not, we can't handle all of them, is there something that they're looking for as an immediate need to them?
Well, I think, you know, the immediate need for the city to take it over as public, I think, is that one hundred and seventy, is basically to get the water service in order because, again, it, I think what I'm hearing is that, well, it could just stay like it is and maybe we'll do it over time, but you've got private lines that are running across property, um, they really- Um, they really need to, those lines need to be within the right-of-way under the street. And again, as count, as Chairman Najad pointed out, you don't wanna, you know, repave the street and then have to move the lines and, and dig up the street, you know, after that. So, the proper thing to do would be move forward with the water. And then, you know, how soon the, the streets and drainage need to be done, that's, you know, again, that's negotiable.
Maybe that wouldn't be a bad compromise to at least get the city to move and make some kind of a commitment based on the participation from their neighbors. I'm not sure.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
How, how would you go about doing the water lines and the streets without tearing up the streets even worse than they are? And how, how would that work?
Well, the current streets are, I don't think, an issue. We obviously would, would patch them back. But you wouldn't wanna do a new street and then come back later and move all the private lines to public and then have to dig up the brand-new street. So, um, i- i- in my mind, you can move the lines to the current, current right-of-way or the current private street and then, uh, you know, provide kind of a minimal, a minimal improvement in the meantime.
Mr. Hallman, in the spirit of fairness, you have heard some other discussions, so I'll, I'll give you some time to respond.
Okay. Uh, first of all, I'm a surveyor by trade. Uh, utilities don't go under roads, usually. They go in the easement on the outside of the roads.
Depends.
Forty-foot easement there.
Depends.
And those lines are on private property now. They wouldn't even need to be touched. The main line would have to be ran in that, you know, on the edge of the road, not on the road, but in the edge of the road. The road's only twelve foot wide, you know what I mean?
But the picture, there is no road.
You're correct. You're right. Our main concern is about the drainage and the roads, okay? We've had our own utility line, our own water lines, running down, you know, on the opposite side of the ditch, out of the right-of-way of the road, you know? Uh, so we've had them running there for some of them fifty years, you know? Uh, so, I mean, if, if the city was gonna vote to take it over, yeah, I would understand that, yes, the plumbing would be the first thing. Because then, then you could do above the plumbing, you could dig out the ditches and you could make the road right. But as far as if we were gonna make a compromise, we would want the drainage and, and the roads. We all have running water. All of us have running water already, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
So, that would be our compromise.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Councilor, may I ask you a question? Would it be appropriate for me to, uh, ask the city and the neighborhood to enter some sort of a informal negotiation and come back at a later time based on, uh, what compromises they're gonna achieve and what the neighbors would be willing to spend as a seed money to get the city to do the rest of it?
So, your options are to approve, deny, or table. You can table for further discussion. You can table, uh, for additional information, but you can't direct.
I can table this based on the discussion we had, right?
Correct.
Okay.
And Mr. Chairman, I would just echo that I think this issue's been cooking for eighty years now. So, and, and I know today we...
The road's not getting any worse, right? Is that what you're saying?
It might be getting a little bit. But this issue, obviously, has been building for eighty years. So, I, I would kinda echo that thought, maybe, that, because we talked a little bit about something new, which is, you know, what, you know, perhaps what could the city live with and how can, you know, we, the city and/or the neighbors pay for that? And so, maybe good just to, uh, table and then we can, um, we can have additional conversation with, uh, with everybody.
I, I, I just don't wanna deny these folks, uh, the right to improve their neighbors, neighborhood. So, uh, any other discussion from anybody? If not, I would make a motion to table this and ask the applicant to enter some informal discussion with the city and come back at a later time and we'll take the matter under consideration again. That's my motion.
My second.
There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any in opposition? The ayes have it. Thank you. Good luck, sir.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Okay.
Okay. The next item on the agenda is... File PZ twenty-two-two sixteen to consider a request for a specific use permit to allow a drinking place in the GCMD, General Commercial Multifamily Dwelling District at ten four-two-five East Tex, Suite one hundred. Uh, Tammy Scott is requesting a specific use permit to allow a drinking place at this location. Uh, Ms. Scott states that they plan to offer a family-friendly environment. All, um, and also she points out that all of her classic flavor, um, drinks will be available in a non-alcoholic option. Uh, the location proposed will have a drive-through window offering to-go daiquiris. The hours of operation are proposed to be Sunday noon till ten P.M., Monday through Wednesday, two P.M. until ten P.M., and Thursday through Saturday noon until midnight. Um, let's see. The applicant is also proposing to have a twelve-by-sixty outdoor patio area next to the building where they plan to host game nights, karaoke, and live music. Uh, this could be problematic due to the residential properties directly across Old Both Road. Um, and as such, staff is recommending a sound barrier be provided to protect the residents to the west from loud music, et cetera. Uh, should point out that the drive-through proposed will be placed between the restaurant and the patio. Uh, this could potentially create a hazard for patrons accessing the patio by crossing the drive-through lane. Um, in addition, a, in order to provide adequate protection, protection for patrons in the patio area, uh, bollards should be provided. Let me go ahead and show some slides. You see here, outlined in red, is the, uh, location of the property. And this is the, um, site plan. You see Suite one hundred there. And you see in green, that's the drive-through. And then proposed in blue is the patio area. So, again, we mentioned in the staff report, providing some kind of protective bollards to, uh, to protect that seating area from the drive-through traffic. Also, the outlined property, you can see to the west across Old Both Road are residences. And this is a view of the subject property. Uh, the building in question is actually to, well, that's the building in question. But this is, um, actually an adjacent building here. But it gives you an idea of the space between the two buildings where the, uh, proposed drive-through and seating area is proposed to go. This is a view to the north. View to the northwest across Old Both. A view to the west. Uh, the southwest. And based on the application, um, let's see. We did send out, I should point out, we sent out eight notices to area property owners. We've received zero in favor and zero in opposition. But based on the application, staff is recommending approval, subject to the following two conditions. Number one, provide an eight-foot sound barrier along the entire west side of the outdoor patio. And number two, the layout and design of the drive-through and patio needs to be, needs to provide adequate protection to the pedestrians and patrons from vehicles. Um, and final, well, final approval, subject to, uh, approval by city engineering. Without, are there any questions of staff?
Mr. Boone?
Yes.
As much as I really love you, I don't like either one of your conditions.
Okay.
First of all, I don't know how you quantify a sound barrier.
So, what we're asking for is an eight-foot sound barrier. So, in our mind, that would be, uh, either a, a, we've, we've used them before, perhaps, uh... Trying to think of the, um, the nightclub there on Calder, Little Woodrose, had a similar condition there. And so basically, a similar...
That was a masonry wall.
Masonry wall. That's what we're proposing.
That was a full-fledged masonry wall.
Yeah. So, to your point, we may wanna specify.
Okay. Number two, how are you gonna protect a guy that's drinking a daiquiri going between the building and there's a car going through the drive-through?
Yes. So, again, that was a concern and that's why we didn't wanna, we didn't wanna necessarily eliminate the outdoor seating area. Uh, and so we thought, in order to mitigate that risk, uh, that we have some bollards, we have some striping. Um, you know, some drive-throughs have that, uh, you know, like Sonic. There might be a drive-through and you might have a pedestrian crossing. And so, again, I think it needs to be subject to the traffic engineer to try to make it as safe as possible, but it is a concern.
Yeah. The difference is Sonic doesn't sell alcohol.
True.
That's what I worry about. Okay. Well, great. Any questions for Mr. Boone? Is the applicant in the audience? Uh, yes, ma'am.
Okay. It's gonna be karaoke and, and live music on the patio?
Yes.
You're not gonna stop that noise?
And we've had so many problems in the past with, uh, racism on Eleventh Street. Being in a residential area, we've had, uh, on, on Fieland with, uh...
Yeah.
Little Woodrose, no, Little Woodrose, they wrote a whole page on Facebook about me because...
So, I would say that, you know, the outdoor seating area was submitted ac- actually after they submitted the original application. It was a concern for us. Uh, that's why we tried to come up with these mitigation conditions to try to address it. Um, it, it, again, the, the commission could recommend to not allow it, uh...
Well, I don't think the neighbors signed up for that. And that's a residential neighborhood. And one of the things that I'm really sensitive to, I do not wanna create a condition that would, we waste policing money with people going out there for noise and vagrants and cans on the road and all that good stuff. That, unfortunately, that comes with the territory. And, and, uh, we just spend a lot of our policing having to respond to some of these things. But that's my opinion. Any questions for, for...
What did you say the, uh, response was from the neighbors as far against to...
We sent out eight notices. We received zero in favor, zero in opposition.
Any other questions? Is the applicant in the audience? Okay. Let's see. The applicant's not here and, uh, we do open this for public hearing. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak for or against this case? None is heard, so we call the public hearing. Uh, we've heard from the staff and, uh, uh, I would entertain a motion.
I have a motion to move to the new meeting, the next meeting, maybe. When, uh, the applicant is here, we have some questions to ask him.
Mr. Boone?
So, what we could do is indicate to the applicant that there seems to be some opposition to the outside portion of the property. And, and if they may be a minimal to s- to s- to s- move forward with it interior-only and we can provide that feedback, um, at the next meeting.
I think that would make it a lot more, would that satisfy you, sir?
Yes.
Okay. So, Mr. Boone, uh... You would enter, enter discussion with the, uh, with the applicant and we're gonna table this at this time?
That would be fine.
I would entertain a motion to table the matter.
I have a motion to table the matter until the next meeting.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any in opposition? The ayes have it. Mr. Boone, I'm sorry putting you through this, but...
That's right.
Uh, you signed up for it, right?
That's right, I did. Okay. All right.
Great. PZ two-zero-two-two dash two-eight.
Yes.
And you shouldn't have picked all these lo- long numbers, either.
Um, all right. So, this item, PZ twenty-two-two twenty-eight, is to consider a request for a specific use permit to allow an adult daycare in, in RMH, Residential Multifamily Dwelling High Density District, uh, at the property at nineteen forty-five Sarah. Uh, Jelena Martin is requesting a specific use permit to allow an adult daycare at this site. Uh, this property received permission and operated as an adult daycare from nineteen eighty-six until around two thousand sixteen, according to our records. Um, from tw- two thousand seventeen to two thousand twenty-one, um, a Sugar Mama Sweets shop occupied this location, according to our records. Uh, Ms. Martin would like to re-establish this property as an adult daycare. Hours are proposed to be seven A.M. to six P.M., Monday through Friday. Uh, breakfast, lunch, and snacks will be provided. Um, it should be noted that the property has changed uses over time and will need to be brought up, uh, to modern codes, uh, including parking as well as ADA parking requirements. Um, in addition, landscaping, uh, would also needed to be provided as well as, uh, buffer requirements on all sides uh, to buffer the use from adjacent residential uses. Uh, in addition, as this property has not been in an adult daycare in several years, the fire department will need to inspect the property and all deficiencies must be corrected. Likewise, as food will be served, the property must meet all requirements of the city water and health departments. Let me go ahead and walk you through the slides. You can see the property outlined here in red. And this is the site plan. You can see the house, uh, well, business now. Area view of the property. This is a view to the north.
Can you back, go back to that picture, please?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Go ahead.
View to the north, northeast, east. View to the southeast, view to the south. And staff did send thirty-one notices to area property owners. We received zero in favor and zero in opposition. Uh, staff is recommending approval of the application, subject to the following condition. That if and when public works, whoops, excuse me, reading the wrong one. Um, the following conditions, rather. Number one, parking must be brought up to city and ADA standards. Uh, number two, landscaping must meet city requirements if the parking lot is expanded and screening is required along the east, south, and west property lines. Number three, the property must meet all requirements by water utilities for water and sanitary sewer improvements, including any requirements by the city's backflow, pre-treatment, and/or fog, fats, oils, and grease program. And then finally, condition number four, uh, property must be brought into compliance with the city fire department. Without, are there any questions of, uh, staff?
Thank you, Mr. Boone.
Thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Boone? And, uh, Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Good afternoon to you, ma'am. How are you?
How are you?
Would you please, uh, give us any additional information that you might have? Uh, first, state your name and address for the record, please.
Yes, my name is Jelena Martin and the address is nineteen forty-five Sarah Street, Beaumont, Texas.
Great. Uh, do you have any additional information you'd like to give us?
Um, no additional information. He pretty much stated everything that was, um, needed. It's prior, it's been a daycare center, adult daycare center, um, prior. So, I don't think it should be a problem and I'm willing to bring it up to whatever standards.
Do you know why it ceased to operate as a daycare?
I'm not sure.
Okay. So, you, you're just purchasing the property?
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just renting it for now, so...
Okay. Is this something that you do for a living? Have you had prior experience doing this?
No. No, I don't have prior experience.
What makes you jump into this?
Because, um, my mom, about two years ago, she, um, we found out she has Alzheimer's. And, um, the need is there in the city.
Absolutely, yes.
There's nowhere for, we had nowhere for her to go. So, I had to kinda shift everything around. So, it just made me kinda wanna get into it. Right now, my husband and I are, um, we have a, a trucking business. So, that's what'll be financing it, right?
So, is there any licensing or training that you require for this?
Yes, we're in the process of doing all our licensing.
Okay. You're not just opening the door?
No, not just opening. We have to be licensed, so...
I just wanna make sure that...
Yeah, by the state.
And you do agree with the four conditions?
I do.
Fantastic. Any questions for the lady?
How many square feet, uh, this building is and how many patients you're going to have? How many square feet this building is, and how many patients you're going to have?
I believe it's roughly twenty-one hundred square feet, and the estimated amount of patients is at least sixty, so-
Sixty patients?
I want to have at least sixty, yeah.
Well, a lot of that would be dictated by the fire marshal also, much- Councilman?
Yeah, I just want to say, uh, this is something that really is needed. Some years ago, I actually, when it was an adult daycare, I actually had to put my father there. And it was good to have somewhere to bring him.
Absolutely.
Took a lot of pressure off of my mother.
Yeah.
And he, and he got, he, he actually, I mean, he didn't have Alzheimer's, but he actually felt that he was going to work every day from home over there.
Well, Mr. Javita and I need a place very soon, so-
Well, we welcome you, just give us a call.
Something that will be covered by-
I didn't mean to, mean to age you so quickly.
That's something that will be covered by insurance or Medicare.
We'll be, yes, we'll be accepting insurance, private insurance, private pay as well as Medicare. So it'll be, we'll be accepting everything, so whoever wants to come can come.
Thank you very much, ma'am, and good luck. I'm sorry, the mayor has a question.
No problem, thank you.
Oh, okay. Good luck to you, ma'am. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak for or against this case? Yes, sir?
I probably stay from here, I just had a question.
If you please state your name and address for the record. You could do it from there.
Very easy. David Moore. My address is fifty-nine ninety Longwood. I'm representing my mother who lives right in front of that property, uh, one street over. I'm very familiar with it, as Councilman Uriel stated. I just had a question, because I remember when it was other uses before it became the daycare, daycare facility for adults. It used to be about OIC office operation prior to that. But the question I had is basically goes to staff. I mean, I'm hoping if you all are not going to create a hardship on the folks that's trying to open it up with the parking, because I'm not really sure what you're going to do with the parking. It is residential, and you're talking about the landscape and all. I'm just hoping that you will take into consideration what it is they're trying to do and not burden or really overtax them with excessive means in terms of the parking. It may not be an issue, but I'm just hoping that staff, you sense it, what they're trying to do, where it's located, and as they did, the need is there. I have a mother that's eighty-nine years old now, so I know a lot about what you're talking about. And I'm here basically representing our property today.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. Moore. Anybody else that would like to speak for or against this case? We close the public hearing. We heard from the staff and the young lady that's going to be getting into this venture, and I would entertain a motion.
I have a motion to approve with four, four conditions.
Second.
We have a motion, and a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And in opposition, the ayes have it. Good luck to you, ma'am. Mr. Boone? PZ two zero two-two dash four-three.
Yes, sir. This case is to consider a request for a specific use permit to allow a healthcare training facility in an RCRH, Residential Conservation Revitalization Historic District, at two oh oh five Broadway. Tana LaFleur is requesting a specific use permit to allow the healthcare training facility at this location. Students will be trained as nurse aides to provide care for the elderly. Hours of operation are proposed to be Monday through Friday, nine A.M. to nine-thirty P.M. Hands-on training will be conducted at a local nursing home. The parking lot for this property is paved across, let me go ahead and show you the applicants, or the slides here. Okay, so outlined here in red is the proposed facility, and you can see this is in Old Town, and so there's an alleyway that runs, basically splits the property. This is the site plan of the existing building and the existing parking lot. Here's an aerial view. So as I show that, the parking lot for this property is paved across the existing alleyway. And just want to point out that no parking should occur in the alleyway. Moreover, if and when the city's public works department needs access to the alleyway, the approach may need to be moved to private property along Fourth Street, where the city engineering, wherever the city engineer sees fit. So again, just addressing that concern. And you'll see here, here's the subject building. And here you can see the parking lot. And again, it's using the existing alleyway. So if and when it becomes an issue, we just want to have that condition in there so that we could address it. Now, this is a view, again, of the subject property. A view to the west. To the northwest. The north. East. Also to the east, to the south. Southwest. And then west. Okay, we did send thirty-one notices to area property owners. We received zero responses in favor and zero responses in opposition. But staff is recommending approval, subject to the one condition, that if and when public works needs access to the alleyway, the approach will need to be moved to enter onto private property along Fourth Street with a location to be approved by the city engineering. But without other any questions of staff?
On your condition, when you say it needs to be moved, that is at the applicant's cost, right?
Yes.
Okay. Who might want to note that? Great, any questions for Mr. Boone? Is the applicant in the audience? Good afternoon, ma'am, how are you? If you would, please state your name and address for the record, and any additional information that you can give us.
Uh, yes, my name is Tana LaFleur. The proposed address is two zero zero five Broadway. I live at three-four-three-five Blossom Drive here in Beaumont. This is my field of expertise. I'm a nurse, I'm a registered nurse. And we do have a shortage of nurses aides and healthcare training in the, in the area. I would be open to the Golden Triangle. I would be open to anyone who wants to seek a higher education. And, you know, towards helping the elderly people.
How many students are you planning on hiring?
It's ten students per one instructor. So ten is the max.
How many is that total in the building?
It'll be ten in the building at one time.
Ten, okay, great, great. Any other questions for the lady?
How long is the class that you have to teach?
I have two offerings. One offering is an accelerated course, which will be two weeks. And then I have a full-time offering, which is four weeks.
Will they be able to do grants to pay for tuition?
Um, that is something that I will look into, look into in the future. But yes, I've also talked to Texas Workforce to, you know, try to get approved for their program, to try to help them pay for it.
How many people do you employ?
Uh, it's myself starting out, and as I grow, I will employ more. I have some PRN instructors in my back pocket. Yes.
And you do understand the condition?
Yes, sir.
Okay, great.
Yes, ma'am.
Any other questions for the lady? Yes, ma'am?
Well, we have, is it only day classes, or will it be day and evening classes?
I have day and evening classes too, um, you know, according to their schedules. Yes, so I want to try to meet the needs of everybody. Yes.
Thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome.
Good luck to you.
Thank you.
Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak for or against this case? None is heard, so we close the public hearing. We heard from the applicant and also the city, and there is one condition about moving the right-of-way, or, I'm sorry, the alleyway, or the approach, I'm sorry, at the owner's cost if and when is needed. Other than that, I would look for a motion.
Motion to approve with one condition?
We have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And in opposition, the ayes have it. Thank you. Mr. Boone, I give you the chance to do the last case.
Okay. Final case is PZ twenty-two twenty-two forty-eight, which is to consider a request to rezone a property from NC Neighborhood Commercial and RMH, Residential Multifamily Dwelling Highest Density to GCMD two, General Commercial Multifamily Dwelling District two, and a specific use permit to allow a mini-storage facility at sixty-thirty and sixty-forty Concord Road. Concord Mini Storage LLC would like to rezone the property in question and is also requesting a specific use permit to allow the mini-storage facility at this location. The property is currently split-zoned, NC and RMH. The applicant states that the plans are to build a one-hundred-and-ninety-unit self-serve personal storage unit development. The property would be gated with a keypad entry. An office will also be located on-site. The property would be accessible twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. Property's located on Concord Road, a secondary arterial street, and just east of the Dallin Road intersection. Let me go ahead and show you the slides. You can see here outlined in red, and you can see where the, uh, the property is currently split-zoned, NC and RMH. And this is the proposed site plan. And you can see the storage units kind of extending there from Concord to the northeast. Let me go ahead and mention the, you know, regarding this site plan, I should say that if, if the rezoning is approved, the minimum side setback in GCMD is twenty feet, and the minimum rear setback in GCMD is fifteen feet. The site plan in question shows fifteen on the side instead of twenty, and ten in the rear instead of the, instead of the twenty. So we would ask for the applicant to consider that factor. And then also, let me go back to the zoning. You can see there's residential property to the east as well as to the north. So a ten-foot-wide buffer, as well as an eight-foot wooden fence, would be required along the residential boundaries. And also, one final point regarding the site plan before I go on is the fire department has expressed some concern regarding access to the rear of the buildings, but would like to work with the applicant to make those minor changes. Let me show you the rest of the slides. Again, this is the property outlined in red. A view of the subject property. View to the east. This is the south, this is the Target Shopping Center there, located on East Tex. This is the back of that property. View to the west. We did send out eleven notices. We received zero in favor and zero in opposition. Staff is recommending approval of this application, subject to the following conditions. Number one, adjust the location of the building to meet minimum setback requirement. Number two, install landscaping to meet city ordinance requirement. Number three, maintain or replace, as needed, the sidewalk along Concord Road. And finally, number four, plans must be in compliance with the Beaumont Fire Codes. And with that, are there any questions of staff?
Any questions? Is the applicant in the audience? Yes, sir, good afternoon.
Good afternoon. I'm Samuel Foulton, SNR Engineers, eighty-seven North IH ten, Suite two fifteen. The issue with the fire code, we've, we've already got that handled. All the buildings are going to be split to where we have a hundred-and-fifty-foot access all the way around it, basically providing a breezeway into it. We haven't went through pre-development on this project yet because we wanted to make sure we could get it through zoning, planning and zoning before we wasted anybody else's time on a pre-development meeting that wasn't needed. And everything with the sidewalks, yes, we, we're good placing the sidewalks back. We adjust everything. The setback lines and everything, yeah, we're, yes, we're good fixing, correcting everything that needs to be corrected. Because if you look at the site plan, there's areas that we have a sixty-foot drive area in between the two buildings. So we have plenty of room to shift stuff around.
Great. Any questions for the gentleman? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak for or against this case? None is heard, so we close the public hearing. We heard from the staff and also the applicant. He does understand the, uh, the conditions, all four conditions that are stated by the staff, and he's working to resolve those. With that, I would entertain a motion.
Motion to approve with four conditions?
We have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And in opposition? Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. This was our last case. We would ask your guidance to release us.
I'm sorry, I'd like to recognize our former mayor, David Moore. Thank you for joining us today. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do something about this chair.